Welcome to the Herndon Town Council Public Session, April 24th, 2018.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and invite you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just prior to tonight's meeting, many of us in this room, everyone at the dais, attended a memorial service for our late council member Jeff Davidson, and I want to thank all of the members of the public and the staff who were there to celebrate his life alongside of us. Also, there is a proclamation listed on our consent agenda recognizing Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Councilmember Cunningham is presenting that proclamation to the Asian American Chamber of Commerce at a future date, so it's a consent item this evening. We have several sets of minutes up for approval. Is there a motion to approve the March 27th public hearing minutes?
So moved.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the April 3rd work session minutes?
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Is there a motion to approve the April 10th public hearing minutes?
So moved.
Discussion on the motion. Ms. Cunningham?
I will abstain.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And we have one abstention. And finally, is there a motion to approve the April 17th work session minutes?
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
It's like ping pong.
And I'll abstain. Okay, we have one abstention. Alright, perfect, thank you. We do have some presentations. The first is a proclamation to recognize National Small Business Week, which is April 29th through May 5th, 2018, and National Economic Development Week, which is May 7th through May 12th, 2018. And we have several guests here for the proclamation, so I'd like to warmly welcome members of our Herndon Economic Development Advisory Committee. I see Dave Burtwhistle and Dave Richardson, I believe, are out there. And is Janine Westerdale here? I don't think I saw her, but maybe she's on her way. And we also have Jan Muehl, who serves as Fairfax County Economic Development Authority's representative to the Dulles Chamber and is attending on behalf of Dr. Jerry Gordon. So thank you for being here. With that, I will recognize councilmember Cunningham to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A town of Herndon proclamation recognizing National Small Business Week, April 29th through May 5th, 2018, and National Economic Development Week, May 7th through May 12th, 2018. Each year since 1963, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the United States Small Business Administration and other government agencies. The town of Herndon celebrates our small businesses and honors their positive impacts on our local economy and the goodwill they foster in our community. National Economic Development Week was created by the International Economic Development Council, IEDC, the largest professional economic development organization, to celebrate the achievements of economic developers in rural and urban communities, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and other institutions. Economic developers are a pivotal part of the communities they serve, helping to promote economic well-being and enhancing the quality of life amongst communities and neighbors. Therefore, the mayor and the town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the week of April 29th through May 5th, 2018, as National Small Business Week in the town of Herndon, and the week of May 7th through May 12th, 2018, as the National Economic Development Week, to support the town's vibrant small business community and economic developers who play an essential role in fostering these entrepreneurs. Further, the mayor and the town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia hereby recognize the contribution of economic developers and small businesses toward a small and strong and prosperous economy, and encourage our residents to join communities across the country in supporting small businesses and merchants throughout the year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments from the council? Ms. Cunningham?
Hats off to all the entrepreneurs who have chosen to make Herndon their home. And for those of you who have not yet discovered us, come and see our economic development manager, Dennis Holstein. We have a vibrant small business community supported by our local chambers. As a previous small business owner, I was proud to be a member of the Herndon Chamber of Commerce, Dulles Regional Chamber, Fairfax Chamber, and there are many, many chambers of commerce, the Asian Chamber, that support our small businesses. So as councilmembers, we're always eager to greet new businesses. As residents, we're happy to see the diversity of products, services, goods that are being bought and sold and offered to us. And as somebody who really values the diversity in our business community, my congratulations to all of our small businesses and our economic developers and our chambers of commerce for supporting them.
Thank you. Other comments? Vice Mayor?
Yes. Yeah, thank you for this proclamation. I love that we recognize our small businesses. We certainly love our big and small businesses throughout town. But often what I hear, particularly with the new development coming, from residents is, "Oh, I want this really cool shop," or "I hope this comes in." But the problem is, and then they shop at Target, right? So if we want all these really cool boutiquey, small business shops, we need to shop there, right? We need to spend our money there and patronize those businesses so that we do have that. And we're lucky to have lots of those choices in town. Valerie Anne in the Sunset Business Park, News, lots of places that I go to pretty regularly. This weekend, I bought a fancy new bike at Green Lizard. And I compared, of course, you can shop and you could buy it at a big store like REI, and the prices are really very comparable. And you get the benefit of supporting a small business in town and having that service that, you know, that is just not the same as if you go to a big shop. So please continue to support these small businesses. And our restaurants, dineonherndon.com, right? We have, I think, 120 restaurants in town, and I believe the stats are 80% of them are small businesses or family-owned businesses, like Brahma Italian in the old Kmart shopping center. So we have lots of great small businesses in town to support. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Olem?
Yeah, this is a great proclamation for us to have. I myself am a small business owner. I'm an independent insurance agent. And also, the DineOn is something that I've shared when I'm out at different chamber and committee for Dulles meetings, for the hotel owners, that they like to send their patrons to Herndon because we have such unique restaurants. So they are now making sure that all of their patrons know how to get the DineOn app so that they can just go to the Herndon restaurants, which I think is great.
Exactly. Mr. McKenna followed by Ms. Friedrichs.
Yeah, this is something near and dear to my heart. I live less than a block from downtown, and anyone who knows me, I think the meals tax actually did well when I moved here, increased substantially.
That's what that uptick was.
Yes, it's probably mostly me. But a lot of it has to do with the fact I was born and raised in a family that had a place called McKenna Stationery for 17 years in downtown Danella, New Jersey. And we were open at 5:00 AM every day, Sundays at 3:00 in the morning to put newspapers together. That built character, for sure. And I learned at an early age, you know, there's no set clock for a person who owns a business. I mean, there were times, I mean, I know my dad would open up the store. We'd close at 1:00 on Sunday afternoons, but he would come back at 4:00 because some kid had a science project and needed poster board. He'd call my parents at the house and go, "My kid forgot poster board." Alright, just go down there and unlock the door. But that goes back to what Vice Mayor Baker was saying, and that the thing about a small business is that it's very, it's something that caters to you. And it's something that's important. It is the lifeblood in our town. I also want to thank Mr. John Boylan for being in the audience tonight, head of the Dulles Chamber, and also comes to the Herndon Chamber of Commerce meetings, which I attend. And although I don't have a business in town, I like to attend those because small business matters to me, and I think this is great. So thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
So, everybody has already said almost everything there is to say, but I want to add one thing, which is when I moved to Herndon in 1996, all of the businesses in the little cute downtown that were little cute businesses started to close down. And I think I date my belief that the Herndon downtown was going to resurge by the appearance of Maude and Green Lizard. Those two businesses made me go, "Oh, okay, this is going to be a cool little town." So people will say to me, you know, "Why are you so in favor of the businesses?" You know, "It's really all about the residents." And it is all about the residents because we need these services that small businesses provide. All businesses are important, but small businesses provide something that nothing else does. You cannot get your bike fitted for you on amazon.com. You are not going to get them to make you a cup of coffee. You can't get your hair cut at Target, and you wouldn't want to. So, you know, as my colleagues say, support local business. I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but those of you who aren't small business owners, it is incredibly important to support what we really, really need, which is service and a cute little downtown.
Thank you. I concur with my colleagues, and I will just add, I would like to especially thank the members of the chamber and Economic Development Authority and Dennis Holstein, who's our town economic development manager and the Economic Development Advisory Committee, because we've really tried to focus over the past several years on really cultivating our business community. And many, many of our businesses are small, locally-owned businesses. And we know that Fairfax County Economic Development Authority has, you know, the entire county to deal with, and they are a great help for us, and we have a great partnership. But when we were able to get our own staff member on board to really be that go-to person for our businesses right here in the town, it's just really made that partnership even stronger with Fairfax County EDA. So we appreciate all of you being here and all the support that you give the businesses and the people who live here. So without the businesses, big and small, we wouldn't have a lot of the great events that we enjoy having in the town because of your sponsorships. And even our small businesses are able to contribute, so we greatly appreciate that. I would like to invite forward the entire council and everyone that's here from the Economic Development Authority and the chamber, and anyone else who would like to come forward for the presentation.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Dennis Holstein, the Economic Development Manager for the town of Herndon. And I want to thank you for recognizing National Small Business Week and National Economic Development Week. And I want to thank you to our partners for coming out and supporting us this evening, including the Fairfax County Economic Development Authority, the Herndon Economic Development Advisory Committee, as well as the Dulles Chamber of Commerce. This year, as you noted earlier, is actually the 55th anniversary of National Small Business Week, which was the first issued a proclamation by President Kennedy in 1963, and 3rd anniversary of National Economic Development Week. Herndon is home to over 1,100 businesses, with the majority of those being small businesses. Many of these businesses were started by small business owners who took a risk to pursue their dream of being their own boss and starting their own business. As a result, they have helped create jobs for our citizens and a vibrant business sector that is vital to the economic health of the town of Herndon. These small business entrepreneurs are some of the great innovators, not only in our community, but in our region, and they have been recognized by various organizations. In the next few weeks, to celebrate National Small Business Week and Economic Development Week, the town will be visiting with several small businesses to thank them for choosing Herndon as their home. And I want to thank you again for these proclamations.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that was going to come forward and speak? No. Alright, well, thank you all for being here. That brings us to comments. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McKenna?
I have a few, yes. First, I want to thank the Friends of Running Me, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Flynn Hills 6th graders, Cindy Roder, Johnny D., and the entire Parks and Rec staff for their work on Friday and Saturday to celebrate Earth Day. It was an honor being part of the tree planting ceremony that we had at the park, and it was really nice. And congrats to Herndon for winning its 29 Tree City USA Award from the Forestry Service. It's a pretty big honor, so that was really cool. So Saturday, did some cleanup and boogied around town to see those things. And also, they can't be here because they're actually doing the work, but I want to say, well done to HCTV for their open house on Saturday. That was from 2:00 until 5:00. We truly appreciate all the work that you do. Make sure democratic process is covered at every public meeting. So thank you for broadcasting the meetings and doing the work that you do, and everything else that goes along with that, with the shows that they have. If you're interested in volunteering or donating, please check out their website at hctv.org. Got your plug in, Nancy. I do want to also thank the Herndon Connection for the wonderful article about the Herndon Youth Advisory Council. It's a great group of kids who are doing amazing things, and it was just nice that they got some credit for some of the things they're doing, so I really appreciate them doing that. And then finally, I didn't get the chance to do this at last public session because, you know, it was obviously after the passing of Jeff Davidson. But I did want to publicly recognize the Fairfax County Fire and Rescue Department here in Herndon, and also the Herndon Police Department. Back on March 31st, I was going to a Final Four basketball game at Jimmy's, and there was a little girl that was walking on my street, Center Street, and she looked lost. And I asked her a few questions, and she didn't know where her uncle was. And so I asked her if she wanted to see some fire trucks, and of course she wanted to see fire trucks. And found out she was five years old. Farrah Louise was her name, and was able to get her to the fire department. They were in-between calls, so they were pretty busy themselves, but took the time to get information, called Herndon Police. Herndon Police was then dispatched. Officer Miranda was the lead officer, walked her across the street, and then he immediately got rapport with the little girl, and walked with her physically back to Center Street. And I stayed in the car for a little while, and then I got a call at 7:40, about an hour and a half later, saying that she was reunited with her mother and father, so everything was safe. But it just shows that we have amazing first responders in this town. And you see some rivalry sometimes between fire and police, not here in Herndon. In New York City, it's pretty, in fact, if you go to the hockey game, it's pretty brutal, the fire department versus police department. Everyone wants to see a good hockey match, go see that. But in this town, there's a lot of synergy between the groups, and it was truly a happy day for me because it just shows why I call Herndon 4.2 square miles, endless possibilities. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. A number of things. One, I wanted to follow up on the small business proclamation, and let everybody know that our farmer's market is now open. The opening day was last Thursday. It's open every Thursday morning from 8:30 to 8:00 till 12:30. It was a little rainy, but we had a wonderful turnout, some really nice new vendors. To echo councilmember McKenna's point, our police and fire are wonderful people. This Friday, if you have the opportunity to stop by Pizzano's here in downtown in Herndon on Ellen Street between 4:00 and 8:00 o'clock, the folks will be, the police will be doing a little fundraiser for the Police Unity Tour. A number of our PD ride in that bike ride, it raises money and raises awareness for police officers killed in the line of duty across the United States. So please take a moment to support our PD and the Police Unity Tour. Stop by Pizzano's this Friday from 4:00 to 8:00, and make a donation. One of the things I love about our town is that it's a compassionate town. Jen, I'm very happy to hear you bought a bike at the Green Lizard because on Wednesday, the Green Lizard started its inaugural season ride, so I do expect you to be out there suffering with some of us. But last Wednesday's ride, I had the pleasure of meeting Celeste Peterson. Her daughter Erin Peterson was one of the children killed in the Virginia Tech shooting. And Celeste has started a scholarship fund in her daughter's memory, the Erin Peterson Fund. This Friday is their annual scholarship gala. It's this Friday, the 27th, at 7:00 o'clock at Fox Chase Manor in Manassas, Virginia. This lovely lady raises money in memory of her daughter to provide scholarships for young people in our area. So if you have a little time, please check out the Erin Peterson Fund. And I want to thank my good friends at the Green Lizard for bringing them to Herndon's attention. Last but not least, this Friday is the Volunteer Fairfax Breakfast, and I look forward to representing the town of Herndon.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
I'll keep it brief, because I don't think I can compete with what came before me. But if you enjoy supporting our children, I would just want to let you know that Art Space is having an exhibit reception on, right now, on the Herndon Pyramid Art Show. So it goes until 8:00, so you still have a few minutes. That is students from Aldrin Elementary, Armstrong Elementary, Clearview Elementary, Drainsville Elementary, Herndon Elementary, Hutchinson Elementary, Herndon Middle, and Herndon High School. And if you saw the exhibit of the autistic, the young autistic adults, and you'll know that Art Space supports our community, and it helps bring our children to a better understanding of where their place is in the world and how to communicate with each other. So I think this is a really important event to go to. And if you can't make it to the reception, because realistically you only have 25 more minutes, please go and see it for the rest of the week. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Olem?
Thank you. Saturday was a pretty busy day for me. There's a group called the Federal Water Quality Association, and we do scholarships for every year for high school seniors rising. So I had to skip the tree planting and the cleanup and the shredding, but my son Mike took my documents and got them shredded. And there wasn't even a line, so it was awesome. So thanks to Mike for doing that. We did come up with four different individuals for the scholarships, which I'll be attending that in May. And HCTV, I did get to come see you guys for the open house, so that was really nice. I got there about 4:00 o'clock after we did our 10 to 3 scholarship judging. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes. As the mayor said before this, we were at a memorial, many of us were at a memorial service for our colleague Jeff Davidson. We got to meet his brother Ken and Sandy, his nephew, also Jeff Davidson, of course, his longtime partner Paula. I mention all that only to remind everyone that Friday Night Live is coming up. Jeff was my fellow Friday Night Live volunteer. So in honor of Jeff, I want to mention Friday Night Live next Friday, so it's only just over a week away now, May 4th. The following, the next night, May 5th, on that Saturday, you can just go back to the exact same place for Herndon High School Band's fundraiser for their trip to Normandy next year. So I've mentioned this a few times, that the Herndon High School Band was invited to play in Normandy next year, the 75th anniversary of D-Day in 2019. And so they're doing a fundraiser on Saturday, May 5th, Town Green, again, same place as Friday Night Live. And the band will be the 555. So it's not the Herndon Band, it's a rock concert. It'll be a really fun night. You get to buy a really cool Herndon hat and some other stuff. But it is a free concert, just another excuse to be outside and listen to music. So hope to see you at both those events. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And I will just add that Public Works is hosting their very popular Big Truck Days event next week. It's Thursday, May 3rd, from 9:00 to 3:00, and Friday, May 4th, from 9:00 to 7:00, over at the Town Shop. It's on Sterling Road. You can visit our town website for more details, but especially if you have little kids, it's such a great time. When Zachary, who's now almost 14, was little, we would go and spend all day, every day there. And it's really, it's really a lot of fun, so check it out if you've got little kids. The next portion of our agenda invites forward anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on our public hearing agenda. But first, I'm going to recognize Kids at Hope Herndon, who is here. They held a bookmark contest at the Herndon Community Center, and the winners are here this evening, and we are looking forward to recognizing them. So I believe, I'd like to invite forward Claudia Thomas, who is our Region 1 Family Engagement Representative and Treasure Hunter, that is a great title, to provide some background and to introduce the contest winners. So is Claudia here?
Yes, she is.
She's here? Oh, I see, she's busy back there, okay. And I think we also have the founder of Kids at Hope, I thought that was you back there, Rick Miller. So we'd love to have you come forward as well. It's nice to see you guys again.
Thank you. Hello, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. We look forward to it every year. And I am Claudia Thomas, and I work with Fairfax County Public Schools. I support all of the schools in Region 1 for Fairfax County, schools, which includes the Herndon High School Pyramid, and then our friends over in Reston, the South Lakes High School Pyramid, then Oakton Langley in Madison as well. And we have an annual bookmark slash design contest. This year, we changed it up a little bit, and we actually had the participants participate at the Family Fun Night that we held in February. In the past, we always had a contest where there was voting at the school site, and then another voting with the community over at the community center. This year, we tried something a little bit different, and we made it an activity at Family Fun Night. So what we have today is some of the participants from that day, and we also have the folks, the young folks from Herndon High School, who did do their annual design contest. And I believe we have three or four of those young folks with us today. And the theme for this year was We Are Herndon. So yes, so we are excited and thankful for all of your support, as always, and look forward to the future of Kids at Hope in the Herndon community.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Rick Miller. I'm a proud professor at Arizona State University, and conducted a research project many years ago to better understand why some kids do better than others, and why some kids struggle and some kids thrive. And our research conclusions has actually changed the understanding of child and youth development. The four major findings were, number one, it's not risk that holds kids back from success, it's the absence of hope. When we began to understand, we began to put hope underneath a microscope and look at the dynamics of hope, where it comes from, why some people seem to have a lot of it, some people seem to have a little bit of it, and why some people don't have any of it at all. So we want to understand how hope is developed and how it actually governs our lives in a very positive way. So that was the first finding. The second finding, when we're working with kids as to why some kids do well and other kids struggle, we discovered we don't control most of the risks that kids experience, although we're consumed by it. But we do control most of the hope, because hope is in the future and risk is in the past. So we focus on what we can do to help kids become hopeful versus just trying to prevent, mitigate, or eliminate risk in their lives. The third finding was hope is taught and learned, that you learn hope like you learn reading, writing, math, and science, that someone has to teach you about hope, like someone teaches you what foot the right shoe goes in and what foot the left shoe goes in, how to tie your laces. And then we realize if you, if hope is taught and learned, you can't teach that which you don't know. So if you're not a hopeful person, it's tough to help people understand the power that hope offers. And hope is really a kind of combination of ideas and energy that propels us into the future for achievement. So hope is taught and learned, and part of our work is to help people identify who are the hopeful people in the world, and those would be the first people you would want to hire. And then the skill sets come afterwards. Normally, we hire for skill sets, and we don't really ask the question whether that person is hopeful or not, we find out later on. And the fourth finding is programs and curriculum alone don't make the biggest difference in kids' lives, adult relationships do. So for many years, we've been focused on trying to find the right program and the right curriculum, when we should be focused on trying to find the right relationships. So those were our four major research findings. We share those in a cultural framework. And the fascinating part, and I think I've designated myself as an honorary citizen of the city of Herndon. And the reason I've done that is, this Herndon was the first city in the country that received one of our national grants, so back about 13 years ago, to model what a community looks like that actually has a community-wide youth development strategy. Not a community-wide program, but a community-wide strategy that says at its core, every young person is capable of success, and there are no exceptions to that. What does that look like when a community embraces a common strategy that says, "We don't give up on kids, nor do we tolerate anyone who does." So 13 years ago, I started making annual, if not biannual, visits to Herndon. I've fallen in love with the town, I've fallen in love with the people, and I really appreciate the modeling and the effort and the leadership that has come along with that. So it's, I'm just thrilled again to be here, to say hello to you, to offer some additional insights and training for the people in the Fairfax County Public Schools that have the schools here in Herndon, the city of Phoenix, I mean, city of Herndon, Parks and Recreation. And it's truly an honor to be a self-designated honorary citizen of your fine town. Thank you.
Thank you. We are happy to have you. Thank you. So are we going to invite down the participants and do a photo op? Alright, well, come on down, everybody.
And it's truly an honor to be a self-designated honorary citizen of your fine town. Thank you.
Thank you. We are happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So are we gonna invite down the participants and do a photo op? All right, well, come on down, everybody. Council, you want to come join?
Sure.
Sure.
Out of our hands. Thanks.
Can we scoot down to the right? Sorry, my right, your left, sorry. Okay, big smile. Everybody, one, two, three.
come forward and share what's on your mind with the town council. This is for any item that's not listed as a public hearing item. So if you're here for the budget, that opportunity to speak will be in a little, in just a little bit. So you have up to three minutes and should state your name and address for the record. And when the red light comes on, try to wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item? Nope? Okay, thank you very much. That does bring us right to our public hearings. Our first one is ordinance 18013 to grant a second amendment to Light Tower Fiber Networks' II LLC franchise agreement to include a route extension. I'll open the public hearing and recognize Tammy Chastain for the staff report.
Good evening. Yes, so this is the Second Amendment to Light Towers agreement that will add 248 linear feet of conduit in the public right away, or 270 total, along, across World Gate Drive and into 12950 World Gate Drive. Nice, short, little round, so. And, any questions?
Wait, don't blink, you'll miss the staff report. Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Yeah.
Nope. Okay, well, the town has received one bid from Light Tower Fiber Networks. Ms. Chastain, have we received additional bids?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So hearing none, I will close the bidding process. This is a public hearing, so I believe the applicant or applicant's agent is here. Did you want to come forward and speak on this item at all? You have an opportunity if you like. No, you're good? Okay. All right, are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, well, then I will continue the public hearing. This is, we'll call on comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? And once again, I have up to three minutes, state your name and address for the record. Anyone? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, I move to pass ordinance 18-0-13.
All right, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by Ms. Olem. Discussion on the motion.
Just want to thank staff for answering all the questions in regards to this, and thank you for the applicant for coming, because it shows you have interest, so we really appreciate that, so thank you.
Other comments? No? Ms. Friedrichs?
So it's my understanding that this is the third time in the past month and a half that we've received this sort of, so we have really looked in, I mean, we have done due diligence, I don't want you to feel, the audience to feel that we're just passing things, but this has come before us a number of times and...
Right, similar issues.
Yeah, the same thing, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or discussion? Okay, well, we do appreciate you being here, and that was short and sweet, so I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. So congratulations, and thank you very much. That brings us to the bulk of the agenda, which is our 2019 budget. The next three items relate to the town manager's proposed budget. There are three public hearings. One is an ordinance to levy real estate taxes. One is a fiscal planning resolution to adopt the fiscal year 19 budget. And finally, an ordinance to implement the budget, establish a pay plan, and reserve ongoing and capital funding for this fiscal year. This is the, I think this is our second public hearing. Yeah, it says third. Oh, we had an opening public hearing in February to announce that we were starting the budget process, and then another on April 10th. So I'll open the public hearing and call on the town manager for comments on all three budget items concurrently. Yep, and then I will call for separate public hearing on the second, too. I'll tell you all about how we have to vote about that when we get to it, because we'll forget if I go ahead and say it now. But all of council does have disclosures, so I will begin. For the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and the town attorney. And Ms. Friedrichs, do you want to start us off? And we'll just sort of go down the dius. And it's going to sound like there's an echo in here, but we do have to all make our public disclosures separately. Ms. Friedrichs.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. Additionally, until April 30th, 2017, I was the Executive Director of Arts Herndon. I do not currently hold any position with Arts Herndon, paid or unpaid. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and the town attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Olem.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants and/or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I'm an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor.
Think I know what you're going to say.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us on the budget this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to just go back and re-highlight the process that got us to this point tonight. It started back, obviously, in December, when you all gave me budget guidance in the form of resolution that was part of a public hearing. The department heads took that guidance to heart, went about their works and putting their submissions in to meet the guidance. We then sat down, we consolidated a brand-new approach in terms of a budget team this year that included a small department head and a large department head, in addition to the budget manager, myself, and the Director of Finance. We took those various requests that were woefully well beyond our means and whittled them down to something that was in line with our means and with what your priorities were demonstrated to me. We then sat down with each one of you, two by two, and discussed the budget, got your input. We've had, now, this will be the third public hearing on it. The last public hearing, I fully briefed where, what we were doing and how we were doing it. I'd like to thank all the department heads for their diligence, their sacrifice in putting this budget together. I certainly like to thank the budget team. They, there were long ruling meetings for, unfortunately, you talk numbers for four hours at a time, you kind of get squirrely, and they did a fantastic job in those deliberations. So the budget you have before you is a representation of the budget I presented two weeks ago with the changes that were made at the last work session. So with that, I will certainly take any questions that you might have, or the appropriate staff is also here as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions generally on the budget for staff at this time? Okay, well, I guess all those hours of meetings have paid off since, and last week, we hammered through quite a bit on the grants piece, for sure. So I would also like to echo the town manager and thank staff for months and months and hours of work on it. It looks really easy when it hits the dius, but there's months of work that's gone into getting us here, and we appreciate that. So, like I said before, there are three pieces to the budget process that we're going to go through tonight. The first one is ordinance 18011, which is the real estate tax ordinance to levy the tax rate. We are not proposing a change in our tax rate this go-around. It will require a two-thirds vote of council, which is five, and does require a roll call vote. So I will open the first public hearing, which is separate, on the proposed ordinance to levy taxes. This is the appropriate time for individuals to come forward and address the council simply on the tax rate. If you're here to discuss any of the nonprofit grants or any other key items in the budget, that will be at our next public hearing. So is there anyone that would like to come forward and address the council on ordinance 18011 to levy real estate tax rate? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action on the tax rate.
Madam Mayor, I'll move approval of ordinance 18011.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve, made by Councilmember Cunningham, seconded by Vice Mayor Baker, to approve the real estate tax rate. Oh, okay, okay, I thought you had a question, I apologize. Okay, is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Cunningham.
Again, echoing my colleagues' comments, thanks to staff for the extraordinary amount of work that goes into setting up the budget, as well as looking at the real estate tax rate. Every year, when we look at the tax rate, we look at three different rates, an equalization rate, a flat total rate, and then the current rate. And we have been really lucky, folks. We have had seven, eight years of an unchanged tax rate. We've had some really smart fiscal decisions made by our staff, and they've really found every penny to save our taxpayers from any increases. So my hats off to the budget team. And the budget process is a little bit more innovative this year. We look forward to continue to make changes, to make the budget a living or breathing document, and to make sure that our real estate tax rates stay as reasonable as possible.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Sure, yeah, I would just add to that. It's great to be up here and get to vote on a tax rate that stays the same. We know we won't be this lucky forever, so Fairfax County being a great example of that, since they are at the point where Fairfax County as a whole needs to raise taxes. We certainly look at this really closely and don't want to forego any services or all the benefits in town that people really love and trust from the town. So it's that balance of where can we trim and really look at how to keep the budget tight, which, again, staff has done a great job of doing, and making sure that we still support the really, the important services that the citizens and businesses have come to trust and expect. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments on this item? No? Mr. McKenna.
I was going to reiterate everyone what they've said. If you look at how we've, Herndon's kept their rate flat the past, is it now going on six years, seven?
Since 2010.
2010. Compare that to, you know, where we live in Fairfax County, and you can see there's some delineation there. And I truly appreciate everyone's work on this. I sold 401K plans for 10 years, and especially, I got right during the Sarbanes-Oxley good times in regards to fiduciary responsibility and indemnification. So I understand your stewardship, and please know that we truly appreciate that, because being a fiduciary is truly something that's warranted, and we're grateful for it. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on the tax rate? Ms. Olem.
Yeah, my biggest concern is when we were having discussions about how lean and tight our budget is, and it's just to the point where you couldn't take anything off of it, so if anything happened. I would like us to take, defer this until May 8th to, because of some concerns with some other individuals I've spoken to in the community about the overall budget, and you can't pass one of the three items without talking about all of them. So with that, I suppose I need to make a substitute motion.
I think that's what you're, that's what I'm getting out of what you said.
Okay, so I make a substitute motion to defer this until the public hearing, May 8th.
Okay, discussion on the motion, Ms. Olem. There's a substitute motion on the floor to defer until May 8th?
For the reasons I just discussed, that because this is such a tight budget, and we did discuss it, that we can't continue going on. And I just want to make sure that we have time. It's not like we have to have the budget passed tonight, because we do have time. In the past, budgets have been passed in May, so this would just give us a little more time to talk about it and some of the things that we've gotten with, in relation to the communications we've gotten from individuals in the community.
Ms. Friedrichs?
Yeah, as Ms. Olem said, I've been hearing some things that I didn't expect in this past week, and I would like the opportunity to discuss that with the council, other council members, and unfortunately, didn't get a chance to contact a number of you about this beforehand, so I apologize for springing it on you. But I agree with Councilmember Olem, there are things that we need to discuss. This is a great budget in many, many ways. The staff has done exactly what we asked them to do, and they've done a great job at it. And I don't mean to make anybody feel tense about this, but we do need to talk about some things that the constituents have brought up to us. So I support Councilmember Olem's motion.
Okay, other discussion on the substitute motion to defer.
I have a question.
Ms., Madam Vice Mayor.
So is this just for, related to the tax rate, correct? That if we continue this, would this just be...
The way I heard the motion was only with regard to this particular item right now, because that's what's being considered.
Right, but I would say that we need, if you're going to defer one, you have to defer them all, and so if we pass one, I don't think we should defer one of the others.
You'd need to do that in each public hearing.
We usually try to pass these together, so, right. We need to have...
We need to do that individually.
Correct.
I understand that.
Other discussion on the substitute motion to defer?
So sorry, I have another, I have a question of our council members then, since this is, can I ask them?
Certainly.
So, yeah, because this is coming as a surprise, and I guess my question then is, when you said, based on stuff that constituents are bringing up, is this stuff they've sent to all of us, is this stuff they've sent to the... to all of us? Is this stuff they've sent to the one or two of you individually? And is this related to the tax rate specifically, where you think potentially whether we need to raise or review some of the taxes listed here, or potentially new taxes?
And just to clarify, we have advertised a tax rate at 26 and 1/2 cents, so we cannot raise the tax rate without re-advertising the entire budget and starting over, correct?
Correct.
We could lower it potentially, but we cannot go higher than the advertised rate.
Correct.
So that would be a two-time advertisement, put us into June or, June?
Okay.
Well into June.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not talking about increasing this tax rate, but I am talking about discussions on the other, and you can't, or we could, we can pass one and not do the others, but that has never been done in the past. You usually want to do all of these at one time, because one affects the other.
Correct. Okay, well, with that, I will call the question on the substitute motion, which is to defer, made by Councilmember Olem, seconded by Councilmember Friedrichs, to a date certain of May 8th. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
On the substitute motion?
On the substitute motion to defer.
Substitute motion to defer ordinance 18011 tax rate. Vice Mayor Baker?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
No.
Councilmember Olem?
Yes.
Mayor Merkel?
No. So that motion, well, it's, we need to have five votes. So what do we do here? Madam Town Attorney?
It's just a motion to continue at this point, not a motion to actually levy the taxes. So it's just a majority.
Okay, so then the substitute motion failed, and we're back to the main motion, which was to, made by Councilmember Cunningham and seconded by Vice Mayor Baker, to pass the ordinance 18011 as written. Discussion on the main motion. Okay, then I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. This is, back to the main motion, which is to adopt ordinance 18011, setting the tax rate at 26 and 1/2 cents.
Ordinance 18011. Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
No.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Olem?
No.
So that motion...
Mayor Merkel?
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to vote, don't I? Still getting ahead of myself. My vote is yes. So, since we did not get the majority, or the supermajority of five, where does that leave us? Madam Town Attorney?
There is no decision on that motion, then. So that motion fails as well.
So where does that leave us for next week? We place it back on the agenda?
You can, we can, we have not advertised it.
We have not advertised it.
So it would have to go for two advertisements.
Okay, this is a conundrum. Yes, go right ahead, please.
So, Madam Town Attorney, the matter that Councilmember Olem and I are concerned about is not the real estate tax, and I would have voted yes if it were solely on the real estate tax. So...
Well, it's clear that the ordinance is 18011, which is setting, levying the tax rate on real estate and manufactured homes, and other subjects for the fiscal '19 budget. So it is solely on the tax rate.
What are the other subjects for?
They're all in the ordinance.
If at this point there is confusion, someone can make a motion to reconsider 18-011, if that seems appropriate at this point. We can do that while we're still...
Right now? Yes, and does that need to be...
While this public hearing is still open.
It is still open.
Madam Mayor, I will move reconsideration of ordinance 18011.
Okay. Made by Gray, seconded by Jim. Okay, so the motion to reconsider, and I'm making sure the town clerk has this written down.
Yes, and the motion to reconsider, I was looking specifically to Ms. Friedrichs.
To, to make the motion?
To make the motion to reconsider.
Okay. So ordinance 18011 sets the real estate tax rate, the personal property rate, manufactured homes and offices, farm machinery, machinery and tools, other classifications of tangible personal property, and miscellaneous levies, and setting all of those tax rates. Okay, the only tax rate that I'm concerned about right now is the meals tax. Is the meals tax involved in this? That would fall under miscellaneous levies, so it is in this, yes. So I don't make the move, motion.
If council, if anyone that has voted against, wants to reconsider this before June, they might want to make a motion to reconsider. So, I don't know, since we are not disclosing what we're talking about, what that, what's entailed, so I can only offer that bit of advice to, if this, if anyone wants to make a motion on this, on this item, while it's still open.
So should we make a motion to specifically hear it in the second week in May?
You'd have to make a motion to reconsider the item all over again, and then make another motion for whatever specifically...
So that would nullify what we've done and start over?
Yes.
So that's what the motion to reconsider means?
It makes it back alive and then votes again.
Okay. Sorry, this is the first time I've ever tried to do anything like this. Yeah, so I make a motion to reconsider the matter at the next?
Tonight.
Tonight.
Correct, or at the next?
No.
You need to make a motion to reconsider this matter.
On a date?
That gets voted on, and if that's approved, you all can reconsider it and offer an additional motion.
Such as tabling.
Such as tabling. Councilmember Olem, since you initiated this, would you be so kind as to...
Sure.
Sure.
Is it possible to, given that it sounds like two of our council members, now that they're being more specific, want to look at potentially raising the meals tax, is it possible to vote on everything else except miscellaneous levies? I can't, I don't suppose we can. No.
No.
Got it.
I do not support doing that, since this is a surprise, and we haven't discussed this at all prior to tonight.
It's a definite surprise. And I guess I'm still trying to figure out, was there emails, or was there communication that two council members?
We don't have a motion on the floor.
We have something to discuss. So we need to have a motion, and then you all can discuss whatever, if the motion...
Okay, I'll make a motion to reconsider and defer till May...
It needs to be just the motion to reconsider.
Okay, I'll just make a motion to reconsider.
I'll second it.
Now you can talk.
Okay. I make a motion to defer until May 15th, or do we have to wait until June?
We can discuss it before we, oh, no, we can't.
I'm asking the Town Attorney, can we defer till the 15th of May?
We haven't voted on whether or not to reconsider it first, so I need to call the question on that. Is there a discussion on whether or not to reconsider this ordinance? Okay, then I will call the question to reconsider. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. So now, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion, and I'd like to ask the Town Attorney, can it be deferred until May 15th?
At this point, if we are to preserve, preserve public, public hearing, we can, we can continue it.
Continue it until...
Continue a public hearing. If we are deferring, then we would have to advertise for another public hearing out into the end of May.
So there's a motion to continue, is what you're looking to do, Ms. Olem? Okay, until a date certain of?
Can we go to the 7th to continue?
Well, the 7th is the work session.
It's the 8th. The 8th is the public hearing, the work session is the first.
Right.
So defer it to the 8th.
To the 8th.
No.
There is a motion to continue, made by Councilmember Olem, for May 8th.
We have another little wrinkle in this.
Wrinkle.
Okay, if you're looking to move any of the tax rates, that ad has to be prepared by this Friday.
Okay.
To make a two-time ad, to make the second set of meetings in May, for you to be able to vote on this.
If you, if anybody's thinking about raising the tax, but again, we haven't...
We need to understand where you want to take this by Friday, in order to make the times, to get the ads in the paper, to meet our legal requirements of advertising this. So that's got to happen by Friday. So we don't have the luxury of next work session.
Okay, then let's just say I would like to continue this until May 8th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to continue to a date certain of May 8th, made by Councilmember Olem, and seconded by Councilmember Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion.
I would just like to have more time to talk about the budget in the long term, and whether or not the rate goes up is, obviously, it's not unless we do it by Friday to make an ad, and I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Ms. Cunningham?
I'm just extremely disappointed by this, when we've had over two months to discuss this. Obviously, some council members have information that the rest of the council is not privy to, nor is the Town Manager or the Town Attorney. I'm a little disappointed that this information was not shared prior to the public session this evening. We've had plenty of time. We, I don't believe have the intent to raise taxes, and so if the intent is not to raise taxes, I would strongly urge my colleagues to pass the advertised tax rate, which we have discussed extensively with a significant amount of input, because this is just the real estate tax rate, and the miscellaneous taxes and the other levies, none of which have changed for a number of years. To get a ninth inning surprise like this is extremely disappointing.
Other discussion on the motion to continue? Ms. Friedrichs?
The opposite way. I recognize Councilmember Cunningham's response to this, and I don't, but I don't feel comfortable ignoring the constituents who came to me. And both Councilmember Olem and I tried to reach out and failed, and we would have liked to speak to you about this before. So I'm sorry about that, but I don't feel comfortable ignoring these constituents.
Other discussion? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so I'm also concerned about this. As Ms. Cunningham stated, I think this is bad form to do this at a public hearing, when we're, we've been talking about the budget since February. I'm also concerned and upset with that last comment made that implies that two council members have tried to reach out to other council members. I can speak for myself, that I have no voicemails or emails stating that either of you wanted to speak to me. We all know how this works, where you need conversations ahead of time. We can all do two-by-two meetings ahead of time to have these conversations. I have no record that either of you have tried to contact me, and instead, nor have you shared, it sounds like you just want to raise the meals tax potentially, but nor have you shared exactly the details. So I think this is bad form for the public, that we're doing this at the 11th hour as well.
Other discussion on the motion, Mr. McKenna?
I was reached out at 8:30 last night, and then, of course, during the day, I got a little busy, but when I was 8:30 at night, I was out of pocket. But having that been said, again, we've had three months, you know, looking at the budget, yeah, I don't even know what to say about this. Just be ready to, give me some numbers, because I'm ready to plow down on this, because I've read this thing inside and out. We're razor-thin as it is. I know why we're razor-thin, and we have a lot of discussion to do, that's for sure. So I just need to know what's going on, and how we're going to do it, and what we're going to do.
Thank you. Other discussion on the motion, which is to continue until a date certain of May 8th. And this requires a simple majority, is that correct? Okay. Other discussion before we call the question? Okay, I would like to call the roll, if that's okay. Thank you. This is a motion to continue to a date certain of May 8th.
My apologies, Mayor Merkel. To continue to May 8th, 18011. Vice Mayor Baker?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember David, oh, I apologize. Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
No.
Councilmember Olem?
Yes.
Mayor Merkel?
No. So we are at an impasse again. There is no decision, correct? So we're back where we started?
Unless someone wants to make a motion again on the, for approval.
And would a yes or a no vote have to make that reconsider? No?
We already have the reconsider. We're in the reconsideration period, so we would just need five yeses to adopt the resolution at this point.
So we're back to the main motion?
We're back to the...
I apologize. It's been a couple of years since I've had a meeting like this one.
Yes. The main motion, we have no main motion pending. Someone would need to make another motion for approval.
Okay. Well, we are either going to have to have five votes to pass it tonight, or we're going to have to have enough votes to continue it, because we cannot have no decision and send us, you know, into the next fiscal year without a budget. So I would implore someone to make a motion. Ms. Cunningham?
Madam Mayor, I will move Resolution 18011 for the real estate tax rate and other levies as listed.
Okay, discussion on the motion, which is to approve ordinance 18011, made by Councilmember Cunningham, and seconded by Vice Mayor Baker. Yes, ma'am?
I would implore my two colleagues, who have some concerns over some conversation, to look solely at this public hearing, which is the tax rate levy. Unless there are plans on raising any of these taxes, I would urge you to pass them as advertised.
Vice Mayor?
Agreed.
Further discussion on the motion? Ms. Friedrichs?
I don't want to contribute to an impasse. I do want there to be a conversation. So I, I will agree to the levying of the taxes, because I don't think we have to, I think it's more important to pass the budget than to, on time, than to get anything done at this point, as far as what these constituents have discussed. But I want us to discuss it at the next public hearing. So if, if the council... I don't really know what to say. Councilmember Olem, do you have something else to say?
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on this item?
Nope.
The motion on the floor is to pass Resolution 18011, made by Councilmember Cunningham, and seconded by Vice Mayor Baker. There's no further discussion. I will ask the clerk to, once again, please call the roll.
Ordinance 18011, as presented. Motion by Cunningham, seconded by Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs? Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Olem?
No.
Mayor Merkel?
Yes.
We are, we are back where we started.
I realize that.
Unless somebody has another motion, perhaps, to, do we need a recess at this point? Do we need to... Do we need to, do, we can go on to the rest of them, but it seems pointless.
I think a recess might help.
You can make that motion. Someone will second it.
There's a motion to recess, made by Councilmember Friedrichs. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, and we will take a brief recess.
Mayor Merkel? We're ready.
And thank you. So, um, we are at the point where, um, the 18011 has, um, had no decision, because there was, it was a four yes and two no's. So we can entertain a motion to reconsider once again, or we can move on and possibly not have a budget before the fiscal year starts. Would, um, either of the no votes be willing to reconsider?
Are you asking us to make a motion, or to reconsider?
Make a motion to reconsider.
I make a motion that we reconsider this matter.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion on the motion to reconsider, made by Ms. Friedrichs, seconded by Mr. McKenna.
I would like us to be able to discuss this matter in the next, um, public session, I mean, sorry, in the next work session, um, and I would be willing to pass this budget if we agree that we will discuss this matter in the next work session.
Discuss what matter?
The matter of raising the meals tax, or some other methods of raising funds for this very tight budget. Not this budget, but the, but next year's budget. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Can I ask a question on that?
The issue is, we can't raise any of our tax rates without a, um, two-week advertising period.
And, and if, if you're saying yes, you'll, you'll vote yes on the tax today, we can definitely discuss it, but then it'll be for the fiscal year '20 budget, it won't be, because once we pass it... It's passed. That is my understanding. Um, my concern is that we won't discuss it, and so I want to make sure that we do discuss it. That's all I'm saying.
Even though it'll be discussing for the 2020 budget, that's okay with you?
Yes, that's fine with me.
Okay. Got it. Let's... So the motion is to reconsider, made by Ms. Friedrichs, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Further discussion on the motion? Yes.
Just to address my colleagues' concerns, that, um, I don't think there's any intent to raise the fiscal year, um, '19 taxes. If we're looking to '20, that's fine, we've got more than enough time, and if there's some concerns with specific spending in the FY '19 budget, there is always opportunity to discuss changes in spending at the mid-year. So if there are some concerns about how we're allocating money in the budget, um, that are backflowing to your concerns about the tax rate, I would also urge you to can, to recall that at mid-year, we do usually readjust our spending.
Other discussion on the motion to reconsider, which would get us back to square one? Yes, ma'am?
And in, in anticipation of a new motion?
Mm-hmm.
If we want to, if, if it is a motion to approve, it can also include the, um, request that it be discussed at a later date. Would make it a different motion.
The motion could be to approve...
Brand-new motion.
With the addition of a discussion at a later date. Thank you for that.
Which is what you were asking for, correct?
Exactly, but can we make it be a date certain, as opposed to...
If it passes, yes.
Okay. Should I mention that?
Okay, well, let's get, let's see if we reconsider it first.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Okay, then I will call the question on the motion to reconsider, uh, made by Councilmember Friedrichs, and seconded by Councilmember McKenna. All those in favor of reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. I will entertain yet another motion. Madam Vice Mayor?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 18-0-11.
Second.
With the amendment, um, that...
Not even amendment at this point.
Or with a...
With an addition.
With an addition that we, um, at, uh, that we discuss this at the next public, sorry, at the next work session.
Is that your intent?
That's mine.
Yes.
Okay. And when you say this, what do you mean? The entire...
The tax, the, specifically, the meals tax rate.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
We will discuss at the next work session.
Okay, made by Vice Mayor Baker, and I will second.
Okay.
All right. So this is a motion to approve the current tax rates, with, um, in addition to discuss at our next work session, uh, the meals tax, correct?
Correct.
Made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by the Chair. Discussion on the motion?
I think we have a responsibility to, uh, pass a budget on time, and given the, um, restrictions on timing that we have with legal obligations, I think it's really important to pass something today. Certainly always open to discussing this. I think what we did talk about with the fact that our rates are, um, we are really proud of the fact that we haven't raised rates, it, and again, even the meals tax rate hasn't been raised in a while, so if we want to discuss that for a future date, I'm certainly welcome that, but at the same time, tonight, we have a responsibility to make sure that we leave fiscal year '18 with a budget.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Ms. Olem?
Uh, the new fiscal year, just for the record, does not start until July 1st, and we do have meetings in May and June.
Correct. So further discussion on the motion? Okay, this is a motion to approve the tax rate, um, with an, um, in addition to discuss the meals tax at our next work session, made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by the Chair, and I will ask, if there's no further discussion, for the clerk to please call the roll.
Ordinance 18011. Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Vice, uh, Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Olem?
No.
Mayor Merkel?
Yes. So that passes, uh, five to one with Councilmember Olem voting no. Uh, I will call our next two public hearings concurrently. They are 18G17, the Fiscal Planning Resolution, and Ordinance 18012, the Appropriation of Funds. This is the appropriate time for individuals to come forward to address the council on, um, the grants or nonprofit organizations or other items in the proposed budget, anything basically that is not related to the tax rate. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and address the council on these items? Yes, sir? It's nice to see you again.
Nice to see you. My name's Harold Edwards, 1030 Sterling Road in Hernan. I'd just like to express my ongoing support and interest in the Sterling Road Improvements Project, and I'm very excited and appreciative and hopeful, uh, that we can get started, uh, doing a little work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on, um, these items? Anyone? Going once? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing, and we will take separate motions, um, on the next two items, which is, um, the first item is, uh, is there a motion, uh, to adopt Resolution, Resolution 18G17 for the purpose of fiscal planning during the fiscal year 2018-2019 for the, the Town of Hernan budget? It is as amended and is included in tonight's gen, agenda, the changes that were made last week. Would you like for me to read those out? For the record? I can do that. In the community grants, it was to revise the total budgeted cash grant amount from $200,000 to $218,000, with in-kind contributions unaltered at $18,900, and direct the Town Clerk Department summary would increase operations and maintenance by $18,000 for cash grants, and the Town Manager Department summary would decrease operations and maintenance by $18,000 to offset the increase in the, in the cash grants. The Fiscal Planning Resolution requires a majority of those present and voting, which is for, and does not require a roll-call vote. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, um, made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by Ms. Cunningham. Discussion on the motion?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, a further discussion on the motion? Okay. Seeing none, I will, um, call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. And is there a motion to adopt ordinance 18012 to appropriate funds to implement the 2019 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Okay. So if we've adopted a tax rate, and we've, uh, approved the, uh, the budget, then we are, might as well appropriate the funds, I suppose, so, um, if there's no further discussion on the motion, um, this requires a majority of the Town Council, which is for, and does require a roll-call vote, so I will ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. Ordinance 18012, Appropriation Ordinance. Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember McKen, uh, Cunningham?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Councilmember Olem?
No.
Mayor Merkel?
Yes. So that motion, uh, carries, uh, five to one, with Councilmember Olem voting no. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 11 and 12 on tonight's agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That concludes our agenda this evening, Ms. Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, seeing no further business, I move we adjourn.
I'll second the Vice Mayor's motion.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:28 PM.